Before I call the meeting to order, I want the audience and the council to know that we were in the presence of the Grand Marshal of the Christmas Parade last night. It's Charlie Jones, right back here, the Grand Marshal. Tell you what, did a great job. I don't know how you do your job as Grand Marshal, but you did a good job. We'll call the December 5th, 2017 meeting with Jackson City Council to order, and we're gonna have the invocation and pledge given by Councilmember Pepper Bray. If you would, please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send out and defend from those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they will have faithfully served in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Aneel, you may show that Councilwoman Foot is absent, and we need to, for the council, remember to continue to lift her husband up in her prayers. Sunny is still in the hospital, so we need to remember that situation. Item four is approval of minutes of the November 7th, 2017 city council meeting. Councilmembers received a copy of those minutes. If there are any additions or corrections, please let me know. If not, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation for public comment, and to the audience, if you, anyone has anything to say to the council and want to approach the council on any item under new business, if you would let me know when we get that item, I'll be happy to call on you and come up and address the council. We have no proclamations this month. And item seven is the election of new council member to replace an unexpired term, Scott Conger. I think we have four resumes, and I think council has received a copy of those resumes, and I think informally we'll ask each of these candidates to come forward and kind of introduce themselves to council and to the, and to the audience, and tell us a little bit about themselves and why they want to serve on this council. And I'm going to call on, and the order that they were brought into the office and delivered to the office, and the first one was Ross Taylor-Pritty. So Ross, if you'll come up and just have a seat, council, and let us know a little bit about you and why he wants to serve on the council. Thank you for your resume.
All right. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor and city council members, I'm humbled and grateful for the opportunity to present myself to you this morning and to even be considered to join you in serving on the city council. I was born and raised in Jackson, Tennessee, lived here my whole life up until college, and, you know, growing up, didn't really think much about civic duty, or, you know, how city planning, or streets, or anything that you guys deal with happens, but definitely benefited from it, and moved away to go to college, and then met my wife Laura. We got married, moved back with children. We've been back in Jackson for about four years now, and living in District Five, and as I went through programs like Leadership Jackson and started to get involved in different things, you know, I realized kind of, you know, hey, I grew up, and there was a lot of work that was done, and there are actually individuals like yourselves that helped make those things happen. And so I started getting involved and thinking, you know, the future of my children, and just, you know, my career here and living here, and wanting to see Jackson become the best it can be and build on what so many people have already done. And so when the vacancy kind of came about, it was something I was thinking through and encouraged by other people to kind of seek out, and, and I know I'm the younger guy, and I've got a lot to learn, but I do feel like I could be beneficial in representing the citizens of District Five, and we'll dig in and work hard, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be considered.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your resume and appreciate your interest in the public service. Again, thank you. Second resume that was submitted was by Anna Parks Covington. Covington, if you would come up and reintroduce yourself to council.
You said reintroduce. Mary, it took me two minutes to get up here.
That's okay. We're patient.
The same C. You know, as a teacher, I have to think about turning my back to you, but I don't have a choice.
Thanks, Anne.
Young man. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, to those who know me and to those who, that's a lot of weight for you to be trying to push it. It is just an honor to be here again, although the scheme of things is different, but last time, when I went through this procedure, it happened and it knocked me asunder because my dream has always been to come back to my desire of my heart. No, it wasn't teaching. I didn't retire from teaching to sub. I retired from teaching to stop teaching, but I've always wanted to be a member, a team player again of the city council, and God blessed me, and I was able to sit up there again. Now this time, a young man that I have always admired in his family, when he made his announcement, it knocked me asunder again. And I just believe that the Lord has opened a door for me to be a servant one more time. It's not about the pay, because when I started out, we were getting fifty dollars. So you know what? I don't even know what it is now, but it is about let the works I've done, and I do have S on works, speak for me. You are in this new city hall because of the votes we did and the work we did. The new city hall, downtown growth, Walmart, housing, education, and other aspects of this city to help it be where we are today, and it's been because of people like me, you. I've worked with all of you except for two, and I have talked to you. I hate it to be a nuisance, but they say if you want something, work for it, be persistent, and that's what I've done. The letter that I sent you because the audience did not get it, let me read it briefly, and I'm through. Don't ring the bell. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time to converse with you on the phone. As I stated, I am truly interested and desire holding the seat for District Five, which was held by city councilperson Scott Conger. Each conversation was different and enlightening as well as encouraging. I am asking for your support as I seek this position. I would appreciate your vote on December 5th, 2017 to occupy this position until May 2019. I am not interested in running for this position in the least. I believe that the people of the district, as stated in the charter, should have a vote and a say-so of whom shall represent them when the election time comes. My duty is to work with you as a team member to help us move on because of my experience and because of my love for the city, so that we can continue the business at hand. I have to serve you as a vessel and as a team player, and also as a member of District Five. I moved to District Five, and when I did from District Four, I was not going to run against Roy Morgan. That was like a father to me. He was like a father to me. So I've just been doing what every citizen in District Five is doing now, working, working, working. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Covington. Appreciate your resume and appreciate your interest in continuing to serve on this council. Let me just remind the council and the audience, this, this vacancy will act as, serve out the unexpired term of Councilman Conger and will stand for reelection in, what, May 19. Our next, next resume was brought to us by French Cherry R. Miller. Miller, if you'd come forward, introduce yourself if you would.
Greetings, council.
Good morning.
Everyone, constituents, members of the district. My name is French Cherry Miller, and I want to be District Five Councilman so I can be the voice of the district and provide leadership to the citizens in that district. I began serving at a young age, and I didn't realize that I was serving until, you know, but unlike some of my friends, it kept me out of trouble, and helped me focus on my education. I volunteered my talents, you know, while I was in high school, you know, to draw the high school mascot murals for West Senior High. Also being dedicated to sports, you know, I would ride my bicycle from Jackson all the way to West just to play football. Once I graduated, I joined the United States Marine Corps at the age of 18. I served 29 years in the Marines, held eight career fields, and served in five major war conflicts, and I made a difference in each of those by providing leadership, loyalty, job expertise, and dedication. These intangibles, along with a strong personality, helped make my, helped me to be successful in the service, and as a councilman for District Five, my dedication and loyalty will be no different. In this position, I'm going to focus on three main things, the first being teamwork, because I believe teamwork makes the dream work. Every aspect of the Marine Corps emphasized on working together. Battles aren't won unless every person is doing their job at the highest level. If you need my assistance in any area, you got it, because if you or I fail, Jackson fails. Secondly is going to be accessibility. Being accessible to the constituents in District Five is going to be a key component. We're gonna have a District Five webpage, Twitter account, and Facebook page for information to keep District Five in the know. Lastly, it's going to be accountability. When I say I'm gonna do something, I do it. I'm gonna attend forums, meetings, and conferences. Any questions I don't have the answers to, I'm gonna find those answers, and I'm gonna follow up with those answers and/or solutions. In summary, my dedication and loyalty is unwavering, and there's no flick-on switch when it comes to service. I just try to mimic the examples of Christ. I don't know every issue the district has or the city faces, however, I know how to get answers, and I'm going to work closely with each of you to make Jackson better. My motto in life is a simple quote from the Apostle Paul that he gave to the Church of Colossus. In Colossians 3:23, it says, "Whatever you do, work at it with all your heart, as working unto the Lord, not unto man." Councilmen, I ask for your vote, and I look forward to working with and learning from each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Appreciate your resume and appreciate your interest in serving on the Jackson City Council. Final resume was brought in. Her name is Marcia E. Christopher. So, Ms. Christopher, if you will come forward. Morning.
Good morning, mayor, guests, and distinguished honorees up there. My name is Marcia E. Christopher, and I was born and raised here in Jackson, Tennessee, and actually, everything that's happening on the news in our world today, I'm always asking my que, a question, what about the children? And something was planted, a seed was planted in me over 10 years ago, actually, when I lived in a little cuddlesack called Meadowlands Cove out in North Jackson, I started an organization called Saving Our Children. In fact, there are a couple of people here that were there with me from day one when I started this little mission of saving our children. I had a little walk in my neighborhood, and I want to thank Councilman Bray and Councilman Johnny Dodd. They were there when I initiated this little seed that I, and Saving Our Children is about keeping our neighborhood safe for our children to grow and thrive, and that has been my platform for actually the past 15 years. And needless to say, my councilman, Scott Conger, I mean, I could call him up whenever he was available, and he definitely supported my vision about saving our children, and needless to say, anyone that has to step into his position, they're definitely gonna have extremely large shoes to fill, because he's been my councilman for several years, but I could always call on him. He was always available to me. Saving Our Children has evolved into not only keeping our neighborhood safe, for our kids to grow and thrive, which I actually worked with Byron Taylor, with JPD, and I actually set up a neighborhood watch program in my little community, but it's evolved from there. It also includes keeping them safe. We have to keep our children safe. We have to also keep them healthy and fit and well-educated. We stress the importance of education, and we all know when our kids are educated, when our kids are given the proper tools to grow and thrive, it enhances our neighborhoods. And not only does it enhance our neighborhoods, it enhances our communities. Therefore, my platform is that. It's like the children are our future, and anything I do will be for our future to stay intact and to keep our kids safe in our neighborhoods, to give them the tools that they need to develop to thrive and to prosper and to become the future leaders of our city, of our country, as you guys are. I mean, they need to have something to aspire to, and keeping our, our kids thriving, like I said, it keeps our neighborhoods thriving as well as our communities, and I would be so honored to serve my district and the Jack, the community that I love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christopher, very much. Appreciate your, your resume and your interest. I think this would be a good time to throw our city attorney under the bus. You wanna, you wanna come up to the back room? If you would be kind enough, Lewis, if you would indicate to the council and our guest this morning, the, why it would take six votes to seat a candidate and maybe reference the charter as far as that's concerned. And we're also going to ask Mr. Cobb to give the council an outline on how the vote should be orchestrated for candidates to make sure that we're fair and make sure that we're consistent with charter and make sure we're consistent with what we're supposed to be doing as, as a governing body. So, Lewis?
When I learned that Councilman Conger was moving out of the district and resigning, I looked at the process to replace, our process to replace him is contained in the charter, and this is the section dealing with elections, section three. I made a copy of that specific page, and just in case I had any doubt in time, since I brought a copy of the entire charter for context, but it's all there.
All right. The process for replacing a councilman is different, quite different from electing a councilman. In an election, it is a plurality. Everybody runs in the districts. The votes are from the district only, and how a person wins. There's no runoff. That's unlike the office of mayor. But in the section for filling a vacancy, and I'm gonna read that to you because it is quite different. "A vacancy in the office of council member shall be filled by appointment of a qualified resident of that district by a vote of 75% or more of the non-vacant council positions." There are eight non-vacant council positions, although there are only seven here. 75% of that, in my opinion, is six. We can get a calculator to check that, but, so it has to have six. "All persons appointed to fill vacancies in accordance with the provisions of this section, except the mayor, shall serve until the next regularly scheduled municipal election." So that's why this term completes a Congress term, and it's my opinion that whoever is appointed by this council has to have a minimum of six votes. Now, we have four candidates, and there was a question about how does, how does the election go? This is my suggestion, although it is not written into the charter. This council acts by resolution, and in order to have a resolution, it takes someone to propose the resolution. It seems like if you have four candidates, but a candidate doesn't get someone to put their name in nomination, then they would have, they would not be part of the panel upon which their votes cast. If there are four candidates and we vote, each councilperson would get one vote, and at the end of that, the votes are tallied, and if there's no one who has six votes, which is the minimum number to be elected, then the top two candidates would then have a runoff. Again, since there's seven people here, and you must have at least six to be appointed to that position, we could leave today with no one getting the magic number of six. That's my take on the process that's in our charter for filling the position of councilperson. I'll be glad to take questions or dodge tires, but that's what I, that's what I suggest. As far as the vote itself, there is no magic process for that. It must be in public. This council can only deliberate and act in public, and so the ultimate winner will have to be done by votes in public. Does that answer the questions?
And the first vote is by a show of hands, since we're talking about individual?
The first process would be to have a name placed in nomination to see who is in the pool of eligible candidates. Somebody would need to be nominated to be in the pool.
Which will require a second?
You must be nominated in order to be considered.
Yes, since we act by resolution, someone would need to propose that name by nomination. Just like as in, in the general election, you have to get a petition of, I think, 25 before you can be placed on the ballot.
And that nomination requires a second?
I think the council will have to determine that. The reason I say that is, is because this is a special type of procedure, but...
Yeah, I think it's just a nomination with no second.
And the fact that you have a second doesn't mean you have to vote for them, but...
Okay, is, okay with council, then. I think, I think this is correct. Just a nomination would get somebody for, council for a vote, would not require a second. Is that, is that...
That's correct.
Is that okay with council? Okay, all right. That's what we'll do. Any other questions, Lewis, before we start voting?
Just one question, mathematically, mathematics. You say 75% is six votes of seven?
There are eight non-vacant positions. 75% of eight is three-fourths of eight, and...
Seven present.
Well, there's, but, but that position is absent, not vacant. And, and in the Charter Review Committee, we discussed that, that it would be how many potential voters, not how many voters are present. So there are eight people, right now, there are eight people on the council.
Right.
75% of eight is six.
Not present.
Well, you could have eight on the council and four present. I mean, that's, that's more of a availability as opposed to being on the council.
Correct. My question, Lewis, is, once those candidates are, are selected, will we vote on them, will we vote on both of them, or would we vote on both of them at the same time? Would we vote, vote on them separately?
I think, I think each councilperson gets one vote, and they have to cast it for one person, and then if no one gets six, then the top two run again in a runoff, and if no one gets six...
Okay, before we, before we accept the first nomination, let me, let me just ask the council to exercise the art of compromise here. We, we do have a vacant council position. That means that one of our districts is not being represented on this council, and I think it's certainly advisable for, for all of us to go ahead and try to get a representative from that district behind the podium here and get them start to work. The, the process will be this. If we elect a councilperson to fulfill the term of Councilman Conger, then once that candidate is successful, I'll recess the meeting for about 15 minutes. We'll ask the judge to come up with a successful candidate, and you all can mill around. You don't have to, you can do whatever. You're in recess, swearing that individual, and once we come back into session, that councilmember will be a voting member of the council. That's the way it's kind of planned. So is there a nomination?
I nominate Ross Pritty.
Have a nomination for Ross Pritty?
Mr. Chairman, my nomination is Anna Parks Covington.
Okay, let's, let's, we take one, one vote here, all right? One vote after each candidate is nominated?
I think we need to get to field.
Get to field? Okay.
Fill, yeah, fill out the field and then have the first round of the election.
We have, we have another nomination, that of Anna Parks Covington.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate French Cherry Miller.
Okay, there's a nomination. Mr. Miller? Okay, is there a motion that nominations be closed?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Second? In favor? Here, back there. Okay, nomination be considered closed. We have three candidates whom the council will, will vote upon. We vote on one at a time now? Okay, those, those members that are in support of Mr. Ross Pritty, if you would please, please vote. And if you would, hold your position on your, on your voting mechanism there until the vote is accurately counted by our secretary.
The vote goes with five that voted against that and three voted for.
I don't think we record votes. There's not votes against it. He has three votes. We just have, yeah.
Three votes and five votes no.
Okay. Three votes.
It's just, it's just...
Three, three votes for...
Just three votes.
Okay, okay, for Mr. Pritty, okay. The next nomination was the nomination of Anna Parks Covington, so those of the council are in favor of her nomination. Would you please vote?
That's three.
What do we have down there, Ms. Anita? You have three?
Three.
We have three. Okay, we're already in a tie. That's good. We also, next, everybody good with that, with that vote? Okay, next, we have the nomination of Mr. Miller. If you would, council, please vote.
Two votes.
Okay.
I think Mr. Bray voted twice.
You can't vote twice, can you?
Right, no.
Oh.
You voted once? Okay, Mr. Bray. Councilman Bray said he voted once.
Then that was one. One vote.
One vote? Okay, with one vote.
Under the procedure that we adopted, we have two runoff candidates, Mr. Pritty and Ms. Covington. Each receive three votes. So now we would vote for one or the other. We don't vote against anybody. We vote for our candidate or not at all.
Okay, is it, council, okay, we're taking these in reverse order in order to be, in order to be fair. Pritty received the first vote, so we'll pick up with the nomination of Anna Parks Covington. For this nomination, council, please vote. Anna Parks Covington is the candidate. Please hold your vote, if you would.
Three votes.
Three votes?
I need to flip off.
Okay, let's turn your, yeah, turn your, turn your flipping off.
Free votes for Ms. Covington.
Okay. Okay, the next candidate is, everybody good?
Mr. Brooks, did you vote for Ms. Covington?
I did not.
Let's, let's do that again, because his...
Okay, on your, re-vote on, on Anna Parks Covington, if you would. If you're supportive of her, please vote yes.
Mr. Buchanan and Mr. Dodd, vote yes. Mr. Cisco, you, you voting for Ms. Covington?
No.
All right. We have two votes then for Ms. Covington. That's Mr. Buchanan and Mr. Dodd. Is that correct? All right. Take it off? Yeah.
Okay, the next vote would be for Ross Pritty, if you would. Council, please vote.
So the vote is five to two.
Okay, council. Somehow we got to get the six. If we, if we elect a candidate, is it within the scope of where y'all are coming from to take one more vote? And if we don't get six, then we will go home and think about it for a month and come back. There is no, there is no mandate as far as the council selecting someone at this meeting. But I do ask the council certainly take in consideration, again, the art of compromise and realizing that this district would not have a representative behind the podium here. So let's go ahead and take one more vote and we'll go back to the original formula and that would be for Ross Pritty. Those councilmembers in favor of Mr. Pritty to serve in the council, please vote yes. Please vote.
That's six votes, yes. Bray, Brooks, Cisco, Dodd, Rom, and Wallace, those recorded accurately?
Yes.
All right. Is that accurate? Okay. We're at the six votes. We appreciate the council, appreciate the, the, all, all the candidates who submitted a resume and willingness to serve on this council. We appreciate y'all very, very much. Now then, I think what we'll do, we will, we will recess the meeting for about fifteen minutes. I'll call it back into order. We'll get Mr. Pritty sworn in right here in front by Judge Blake Anderson.